Basically.
I mean, I don't have a guess.
Exactly, absolutely.
It's a good case.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, let's get started. 5:00 PM. I call the order of the Village Board of Oregon for Monday, December 1st, 2025. Ask Kirk to call a roll, please.
Higgins.
Here.
Kirchdorfer.
Here.
Knipfer.
Here.
Marx.
Here.
McDaniel.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
And Van Campen.
Here, thank you. Item 3, approval of November 17th, 2025 Village Board meetings if correct and correction of mistakes if any. Get a motion. Amanda and Paige. Questions, comments, corrections? Hearing on all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 4, public appearances, comments, communications, item 4, discussion or possible action, public comment. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the Village Board. Include items both on and off the agenda. Do we have anyone here for public comments? Seeing none. Item 5, approval of vouchers in the amount of $1,425,338.74. Looking for a motion to approve, Rick and Tim. Questions? Uh, Tim?
I had one on page 14, changed doors from maglock. What is that?
It's for the police department doors. Um, it's to make them more secure.
Oh, cool. Okay, thanks.
Anybody else? No? Okay, motion by Rick, second by Tim. All those in favor indicate. Oh, once again. Thank you.
Van Campen?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Knipfer?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Kirchdorfer?
Yes.
Marx?
Yes.
And McDaniel?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 6, contents agenda. Uh, item 6A through 63C, staff recommendation, motion to approve. Higgins and Knipfer. Questions on these items? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate.
Sorry, I did have one. On the, um, drug collection grant, um, I noticed that the list of exclusions in the statute was kind of weird. Like, don't use it to collect oil. But it also mentioned not collecting lancets and syringes. Is there a safe disposal method for like diabetics who give themselves injections? What do they do with their needles?
Yeah, so outside of the scope of the grant, um, during take back days, when we do host those, we do allow, we will take in needles. DeForest PD collects all of them for the county and then disposes of them a different way.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Amanda?
Yeah, I was just going to speak in support for Nancy Meyer. She's someone who I'd met and have talked to and recruited for the Transportation Committee. So I think she'd be a good addition in case anyone had any doubts. Thanks.
Anybody else? Hearing none, uh, motion by Higgins, second by Knipfer. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 7, reports of committees, non. Item 8, unfinished business, items for discussion and/or possible action. A agreement for this between the City of Pittsburgh, Village Oregon, and the Capital Area Regional Planning Commission for joint planning assistance services for development, planning on lands located in the City of Pittsburgh, generally between US Highway 14 and County Highway MM interchange and northern entrance to the Village of Oregon. Looking for a motion to approve, Tom and Tim. Any additional comments, Martin?
I have a pretty extensive memo in the packet that covers some of the background on this. But, um, a couple of different things going on here with economic development and utilities. And most recently, this board has seen the juvenile facility project come through. The economic development piece of this, we haven't talked about on the Village Board agenda this year, but we talked about it several times in 2023 and 2024. And so this is sort of the, uh, the approach that both sides' staff have, uh, agreed to and put forward for both sides to consider in terms of trying to move all of these different little pieces together in some kind of coordinated fashion. This is a pretty low stakes proposal in terms of the economic development piece. It's, it's kind of a, um, data gathering and interviewing stakeholders, uh, piece. And then there'll be a joint meeting between the Village and the city, tentatively set in February to decide if it's something that we want to move forward on or not, and how do we move forward on it? And then there's the second piece of this, which is the Urban Service Area Amendment through CARPSY. And so that's going to be something that's needed for, um, the juvenile facility project, regardless of anything else that happens out here, if that's something that we want to proceed with. And then in the future, if the Oregon School District does end up putting some schools out here, we are going to need that USA Amendment again. So the second phase of that, of this proposal would cover those different costs and, and work. Happy to answer any questions or background on this.
I might mention too, I believe the City of Pittsburgh Council has already approved this. Questions? Tom?
I guess I'm just, how did, was, did this come up in discussions with CARPSY? Or was there some, like, sort of interested in the backstory of how we finally got to? Because we've had a lot of discussions about this at different times.
Yeah, um, I guess kind of going back, you know, when the board, uh, was interested in, in this economic development expansion, whether here or in other places, this was one area that, um, was a possibility. And, and we reached out to the City of Pittsburgh staff, our counterparts there, and had conversations with them about what this might look like and if there's any interest. There is interest and after talking about it, um, and thinking about it for quite some time, and both sides having a referendum in between there, in the middle, getting distracted there. But, um, uh, we decided that a really good way to sort of approach this initially would be to bring in a third party to kind of be an intermediary between the two sides. And after thinking about it and talking about it some more, it really felt natural that CARPSY would be that intermediary because they are already sort of a legal authority for regional planning. And so it makes sense for them to sort of serve as that, um, I guess, sort of consultant and, and facilitator between the two sides to kind of help understand exactly what we're getting ourselves into and all the things that we need to think about and what even the process is. It would be a, a pretty unique arrangement. There's not a lot of places in Wisconsin that you can point to that are similar to this. So CARPSY felt like a good, um, fit in terms of just being sort of authoritative. And this is sort of their role to begin with. And also in this process, they're going to have to be an approval authority. And so it felt good to have them right here at the onset. Fitchburgers also worked with them in a planning capacity. They've done some neighborhood planning work with, with CARPSY and have a good relationship with them, as we do too, from going through urban service area amendments for different projects. So it felt like a very good place to, to start and, um, very inexpensive too.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank you for this work. I think this is a great example of the fact that there are a lot of things that happen behind the scenes, especially when it comes to economic development. While I would love to always have this out in front of everybody all the time, there's a lot of processes that have to take place. And so I'm excited that this gets to kind of be out there now. And it's something that I know this board has discussed quite a bit. But I just wanted to genuinely thank the staff that have worked on this. It seems like a simple thing, but it is so not simple at all. And so, uh, really appreciate even these tiny steps as we move forward. Hopefully, they move forward with a great outcome at the very end of it.
I was going to just add that I think one advantage of having a third party is it kind of keeps the process moving, rather than just counting on one municipality or the staff of kind of prodding. I think that's a, a big advantage here. Other comments, discussion, questions?
I would just say I'm looking forward to seeing what develops out of this. Like, it'd be very good for us.
Okay, we have a, a motion by Tom, a second by Tim. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 8B, review responses for the, uh, request for proposals for capital campaign, campaign consulting services for the new senior center and determine fundraising approach. Staff recommendation, motion to reject all proposals and proceed with activation of fundraising committee, a staff for fundraising approach. Amanda and Tom. Rachel, you want to add to your?
I think we had hoped to see a, at least one of these proposals that looked more tailored to what the processes that were going through. And none of them really did that. We are at a point in this project that we don't necessarily feel like pausing to spend three months trying to study how much money we might be able to raise and then investing a lot of money in somebody who's then trying, helping us try to raise that made as much sense as relying on some of the local resources that we already have. Conversations with Elise and LeAnn suggest that LeAnn has some time available to be able to spend on a fundraising process. And if we activate that committee and get things moving, we think that in the long run, we may be financially ahead and, um, able to secure funds more quickly than if we go down the road with one of these consultants.
Yeah. Amanda?
Yeah, are you able to kind of follow a similar path as what they did for, for the library fundraising? I mean, obviously you can't do the same work or use the product necessarily of, of another firm that helped out with that. But, I mean, looking at the things that worked for the library, I mean, I assume you and Jennifer are talking and that that might help in some way?
Yeah, I'm not sure, like, we have a one size fits all, um, solution that we could just say, hey, here's like a stop by stop plan. I think the projects are very different in scope and process and where they're at and what they need to do. So there's certainly, um, information that we're happy to share, whatever can be of use, uh, with Rachel and the team. But I'm not sure we have like a plan that we could be like, here, do these things and you'll raise the money. Because each journey is unique.
Right, I think that the, the fundraising committee, um, once that is in place, will draw on some of its own expertise, some of the people who are on that committee. And I also think that, you know, conversations we've already had, I've already had with Jennifer, we can pretty much envision some of the things we need to do. You know, we need to establish, um, naming rights and, and, you know, donor recognition programs and all those kinds of things that will help us, um, as we raise funds.
Tim?
Yeah, I'm kind of concerned with this. I, you know, at first read through these proposals, I agree that I don't think any of these three do what we were hoping for. But they identify two key competencies that I'm not convinced we have. Building the case for support in the fundraising process is one that I'm not sure we have the people to do. And prospect identification is another thing they talked about that, I mean, do we have either of those resources available locally?
Those are good questions. I think, again, we would rely on our local contacts and people who would be named to that fundraising committee. Hopefully, we'll be able to get a broad enough segment of the community and some people who have some of that knowledge about where to. I mean, w- we'll be approaching the same people to serve on that committee that we would be giving the names to the consultants to say, talk to these people. So the fundraising consultants don't come in knowing your community. They come in asking to meet with people who are well-connected in your community. So we will meet with people who are well-connected in our community.
Right, but they come in with databases from other fundraising campaigns of people who have contributed to similar campaigns and other data that they've gathered that would be really valuable in terms of reaching out to people. And that's, that's what I worry we're not getting if we just go locally. My woman, that concern.
Other comments?
Well, because Tim asked a question, I feel like we should answer. I mean, I personally, I don't, I don't feel like not having the database or the, the machine behind it worries me. I think, two things. I think the work that the Senior Center has done in this community should, should stand on its merits. And I, I do think that that will have great impact in this community. And I also think that financial responsibility, um, is also something people are looking for. And on this board, we have had to have that discussion many times. And I think if we don't feel like hiring a professional financially makes sense, I would hope that that would, um, send a message that we aren't willing to spend money wherever. And if I were a donor, that would mean something to me, that, that, that the village is making financial decisions. That the Senior Center building team is making financial decisions that are pragmatic and not simply just throwing money at specific things. So in my mind, I am very much for this. I, I always want to keep an eye on burnout and, and, you know, putting too much on people. But I think if staff feels like this is doable at this point, you know, if we get to a place where we need that machine or we need to reengage and think about a professional service, I would hope you'd always feel welcome to bring that to us. But if at this time, your recommendation is to do it ourselves, then I'll hold with the recommendation.
Rachel?
I would just say that I don't think it's any less work for staff really, no matter which way it goes.
I, I've, uh, uh, met with Rachel several times and, and Martin and talked about this, particularly in light of these proposals and how expensive they were. And, and I didn't really feel, I felt that, as Rachel had said, that if we'd gotten someone local, I think I'd felt better about it. But to your point, Tim, I think that, uh, it's a small enough community that, that we think we've identified the individuals that can, uh, will have the knowledge about, but good potential donors. We, also, we plan on doing a, a village-wide mailing to, for donations. But I, we do have particular people picked out that were asked to either be on the committee or as people that would, the committee can look to for the type of information you're, you're talking about. So I understand your concern, but I, I am quite confident that I think we can, uh, we can do this with the help of staff and, uh, our residents. Tom and then Rick.
I guess I'd also stand with, uh, moving forward with the committee and rejecting these three proposals. Part of it, it comes, it's pure economics to me. The, the amount gained that we would expect to accomplish out of this is probably very marginal compared to the overall cost and relationship to it. I, it's a big bite. I think, I think Rachel makes a great point that even working with a, a service or an organization is still going to take a lot of Rachel's time. It's going to take a lot of our staff's time to meet and, and consider these things. It's not reduced by bringing in these consultants. So I guess from, from that standpoint, I guess I would, I would support the, the recommended motion.
Okay. Rick?
I was going to say about the same thing as Tom. I, I am concerned about making sure that we get the most bang for our buck when it comes to these consultants. And I think that starting with the committee and starting locally, especially with the staff that's recommending that we start that way, I wouldn't be opposed to the idea of looking down the road after we have looked at every local option that we have available for that so that the consultants wouldn't just come in and basically replicate what we would have been able to do on our own. And if they have the ability to, on top of everything else we're able to do, show us, uh, the ability to really bring more money out than they're going to be charging us, I think I could be, uh, sway to be in favor. But for now, I will go with the staff recommendation.
Anybody else? Okay, we're motion by Amanda, second by Tom. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Okay, that's good then. Okay, thank you. Item 9, new business, items for discussion and possible action. A inspection of natural gas systems in new construction. We had a very good memo from Martin. Uh, I believe, Tim, you added this to the agenda. Do you want to lead off or?
Sure, um, I guess my concern is just from some high-profile granted anecdotal situations with the 880 building and with the house that blew up over here, that we're relying on contractors that don't always complete the job as expected. And I'm wondering if there are options to build in some more fail-safe at the village level. The, at a minimum, I think I'd like to see a process whereby if and when a gas leak is discovered in new construction before or after occupancy, we're recording the contractor that failed to properly connect all the connections so that we can hold them accountable. You know, one of the things I noticed going through the, the fire calls is the number one fire call in Oregon year to date, not EMS, but fire, is gas leak. We'll get more than one a month. I don't know how many of those, you know, as Martin said in his memo, gas leaks happen for, or gas leak reports happen for a lot of different reasons. They're not even all real gas leaks. But we do have two instances in the last couple of years that seemed a little bit concerning that we got here. And I'm just looking for some work we can do to maybe close that gap if possible. And I realize I'm kind of flying blind here, so forgive me if it's a little chaotic.
Without objection, I'd like to have Chief Lenzmeyer come up and see if there's, board if it has any questions for him. I have one and we'll start there.
Let me ditch this jacket before I overheat. Hi, Chief.
I know that in particular, there was the 880 building on North Main. Maybe you could tell us a little bit about that, Chief?
So the 880 building, that's the, the one, one of our three-story new apartment buildings next to, uh, quick trip up there in a cemetery. I think what Tim was referring to is-
Pull the mic a little closer.
I think what Tim was referring to is a call that we had up there, probably, my memory serves me right now, probably, oh, I don't know, 12 weeks ago or so. After occupancy, that kind of stuff. We were up there for a gas leak on one Sunday night. Gas leak turned into like, like 23 or 25 other gas leaks inside the building that we found. Uh, our crews started looking in one apartment, they went to the next apartment, found kind of the same thing, and we went through the rest of the, the units. Of course, as with any call like that, there, that's kind of a commercial building, five or more units where the fire departments called in, we look at that. Alliance brought in, they brought a few crews in, they basically red-tagged the building, had the contractor and the folks come back, basically fix everything up to speed. You know, pressure test that do what they need to do and then put the systems back online the next day. Fortunately, it wasn't the wintertime, they didn't need, uh, you know, any heating or anything of that nature. They had, still had hot water. They were, were able to, to make it overnight, that kind of stuff on that particular building, on the 880 building.
And, um, when you find, when you respond to a gas leak or something like that, that goes into your system is recorded that way. Now, do you report that anywhere else statewide?
We do, we, we, not statewide, we report it back to the NIFR system, which is the National Fire Reporting Incident System. And all that information is basically through the Fire Academy across the country as far as statistics.
Okay. Did you have something else to add, Martin? I guess going forward then, um, is that something that you could provide a, a report, maybe semi annually or, or something to the district members, not just the village, but?
On gas leaks or what are you talking?
Yeah, gas leaks.
I think a lot of that stuff is already in our annual reports, maybe not broken out as, you know, as defined as a gas leak. I'd have to look exactly how we got that broken out. But ultimately, um, let me, let me take, take a step back. There's two different types of gas leaks. We've got gas leaks in residential units that we have only any say when we get called. That means a homeowner has to call the fire department for a possibility of an alarm going off or smells gas. That's the only time we can come into a residential unit with their permission and come in. And at that point, then we start looking for it, then we bring a line in if we need it, if we find anything, and we go through that. So that's, that's residential stuff. On new construction, on residential, the fire department's not at all brought into doing any inspections or anything else. On all commercial stuff, five or more units and, uh, any commercial buildings were brought in pre-occupancy. So at that point, we're doing our, all of our inspections and all that kind of stuff. We work with the building inspector, which is the contract service here, uh, very closely, and we let them know what we find and occupancy isn't given until that happens. Sometimes the meters might not be turned on, uh, when occupancy is given, but then we check them and all that kind of stuff. With all of the gas leaks and everything else that we've had in Oregon here, we went over and above. The fire district has because we have found some different things with some faulty, um, you know, parts, that kind of stuff that's on the market. And we common things that we've been finding. So we've been going over and above for those residencies, make sure that, uh, that we're safe. And I think those are the things that our men and women are doing. When I came to Oregon back in 2016, we had like one gas detector. Today, we have five. Alliance just gave us another thousand bucks for an extra one. We have a lot of gas calls in Oregon, as Tim can contest and yourself, Phil.
So it sounds like then, uh, with new construction of multiple units, maybe more than duplex, that you're actually checking for gas leaks or just aware that that might be an issue?
The fire department, uh, any of our stuff that we're going in, any of the new construction, commercial buildings, where our inspectors are carrying a gas detector with them, which is over and above what a lot of places do.
Okay.
That's what we decided to do here, just because of what we've been seeing. And there again, with the ongoing gas calls and upsetting people after they're in our house for six months and finding gas leaks, we're better off finding it on the front side than later on.
Sure, sure.
In our opinion. In our opinion.
Yeah. Lynn and then Paige.
I'm sorry, Chief, if I'm not getting this, but if you're finding it on your inspection, should someone have found it prior to the fire department's inspection?
That I can't, that, that I can't answer for, for there again. I know what the, I know what the law does and I know what the building inspectors do. They're assuming that contractors do the stuff and that, that everything is not leaking. And there again, they're going to walk through the buildings, they're going to look at it, they could be, be pressure tested and all that kind of stuff, and it might not be. There might be some air in the lines or something else that needs to be bled up, bled off. Uh, and it just, it isn't there at that particular time. So then the building inspectors do their very due diligence to say that they believe the building is safe. And at that point, they sign off the building and they let things happen. And then later on, after the fact, when we come in and do what we need to do and adjust and, you know, overcome and make sure the safety elements are there for our constituency here in the Oregon district.
Paige and then Amanda.
Okay, so I want to confirm my understanding. So new residential homes are not inspected by the fire department?
That is correct.
That's all I'm confirming.
Yep.
Amanda and then Tim.
Okay. I'm trying to get in order here of how things happen. My understanding is contractor builds the house, installs all the lines, the gas lines and all of that. But the gas isn't turned on yet because no one's living there, right? There's no occupancy. So every, all the stuff is in place, but the line is off. You come in and inspect, the line is, well, not, not for, it's only if it's more than five, right? Okay. But when you inspect, those lines to each individual apartment or condo or whatever would not be on. Does Alliant Energy come when they come, turn on the gas or however that works? Do they do an inspection in real time?
As what Alliant will tell you and any contractor will tell you, Alliant's responsible up to the meter. Anything after the meter is the contractor or the company that does the work.
Okay, so-
And the only time Alliant usually goes inside is once they have a call. So on new construction, they won't have a call yet inside the building. They're assuming that everything's good up to their meter and everything from the meter inside is the contractor. So then they need an incident to bring us to it, to look at for it. Or we start looking for it beforehand.
So the building inspector can only check that things were installed properly or look at the lines or think this looks good? But they can't guarantee that there aren't any leaks because it's not on yet? My understanding, I mean, it just feels like a weird kind of cycle that you just have to-
Well, there's, there's a lot of cycles and people don't think, you know, in the, in the years, years ago, everything was black pipe and it was all threaded. So now a lot of things are plastic. So now building inspectors need to look for nailing strips. So any place they have a two-by-four wood in the house and they put a plastic line through it, all it needs is a nail through, one nail through. If somebody, if a building inspector misses a nailing protector on a two-by-four, which is behind the drywall, it could be punctured at a later date or a screw could be shot into it. And then it would be a potential leak inside of a wall. It'll be leaking until it is found by an incident. So there's a lot of good things about plastic and everything else, but there's also some other things that have brought other issues with it. So I will just say in my house that I built back in 2008, there was no plastic in it. And contractors won't like to hear this, but it's all black pipe, 100% threaded.
Tim?
Okay, so in the incident at eight-eighty, we had an incident. We discovered a problem. Now, my understanding is normal protocol for that contractor who was responsible is that they should have done, um, some sort of investigation, figured out where the breach was, where the gap was in terms of what was supposed to happen and what did happen, and then take some corrective action, whether it was more training for employees or better documentation of processes or some sort of double-check on the process. Do we know if any of that happened and was it recorded in any way at the village?
That I would have no idea. I have no idea what the contractors do, all the above. Because once the Alliant put the red tag on, you'd have to ask them. It's their gas, gas and they will not turn it back on until the contractor meets what Alliant needs to have done. And I cannot speak to that.
Do we know what the cause of the leaks in that building were? Was it faulty connections? Was it?
Just a whole bunch of different connections, different transition stuff, you know, from, 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 uh, from flexic pipe to, to fittings and different things of that nature.
Not properly connected.
That, that I'm not saying, I'm just saying that, you know, transitional piping, different areas were, were leaking. We found one and then we started looking at others and then we could find transitional pipes where it went from copper to plastic or plastic back to metal or something else. Transition pieces is what we found. And then we just turn it over to Alliant and Alliant basically did the red tag and, uh, basically had the building, uh, you know, uh, brought up to, up to where it needed to be over the next day or two when the contractors went through the whole building from top to bottom.
And, and, um, what sparked that? Was that a call?
Yeah, somebody in a unit up there, somebody smelled gas and brought the fire department there. And then one thing led to another, to the next, to the next. And all of a sudden, we're on three floors and then we're pounding on every door, waking everybody up at nine o'clock at night on a Sunday night and checking their units just to be safe and making sure that everybody was, uh, you know, okay.
Okay, uh, Tom?
I guess go back to, you've indicated in your comments here this evening that, that you, there are a lot of calls in Oregon for gas. And is this an abnormal amount? Are we seeing different, is, is our community, the new construction occurring in our community, is it different than what other communities are experiencing?
I haven't pulled any, any numbers from throughout Dane County or say the southern Wisconsin. Just in general, I, I think there's a lot of gas calls, a lot of different places and a lot of communities. All you have to do is watch, a lot of people, I hate to say, but watch, uh, pulse point and you can see exactly what's going on and there's a good number of gas calls throughout the area.
So when you use the term lot of calls, is it more than everywhere else or is it just-
I would say it's probably about the same. Make everybody relax a little, so.
So it isn't something that's an epidemic to Oregon?
I would not say it's an Oregon thing, no.
Rick?
I was just going to say, from my experience in water, um, this is similar to water. The utilities, both electrical, water, gas, all basically are responsible up to the meter, up to the point of contact of the property. And then afterwards, it's up to the inspection of the local municipality. And would this be something that you would consider normal in the other practices? And that our, our inspection process is, is currently what you would like to see it?
Uh, I will just say, uh, in general, different places that I have been to, when you have inspectors that are part of the village, you know, part of a inside operation day-to-day, you just might go a little bit more and above, uh, that kind of stuff. And that is one thing that we have sat down and we have talked to the contract service here about making sure that they know where we are, where, where they are. And we're trying to make sure all of those things are covered for the safety of all of our folks that we protect.
Lynn?
Do you think that that approach is sufficient for right now? Having these relationships with the contract services, making sure that they know you and, and feel comfortable to reach out? Or do you think that there is a line of, um, oversight that, or, or on the behalf of the village that maybe we should be exploring, um, to, to add to that buy-in and, and that, that feeling of responsibility? You know, we can't guarantee that they're a part of our community, but we want them to feel like they understand our needs and the priorities that we have?
I have no problem with any contract services and all the above, you just have to have good relationships. I think everything goes back to what inspectors have for experience in the field. When you have young inspectors or you have, I'll just go back to my own inspector. So if I have, if I put young people out there, you have to keep very tight parameters on them and you have to make sure that things are being followed up. And you have to ask questions that lead into the next question and saying, hey, have these things have been looked at? My inspectors are only looking because I have instructed them to look for certain things above and beyond. And these are the things that trigger, just with the experience that I have seen in the field, the calls that we went on, the different things. So then we give that information to the, the building inspectors. Doesn't matter which one of the districts we have here or which one of the municipalities. And then we hope that those folks do something and look over and above as much as we do. Because when and if we get a chance to come back before an occupancy, we're going to take a look because of everything that's happened in Oregon and our different calls. So going back to that, it's all about the young inspectors, I think. It has nothing really to do with the contract services. I think it has to do with young inspectors until you get them with experience and see different things that are happening, if that makes any sense.
Tom?
I guess I'm, I'm going back to some of the coverage we were given here in the packet. And I guess I'm looking at, we're, we're inspecting for the worst structure you are legally allowed to build, which is sort of an alarming statement, but. I guess from my own experience and I guess Rick would probably be a better, you know, it's hard to test these systems unless you actually turn them on and actually put water into the system or put gas into the system. And if the inspections are, and yet at the same time, we have to, we can't be more or less restrictive in our requirements than, than other entities. So if we had a requirement that testing, um, you're done with the gas on, would that be a more restrictive requirement?
Probably.
Tim and then Lynn?
First of all, I want to say, Chief, thank you for answering all our questions here. It's probably feels like we're holding you accountable for this issue and I'm not sure it's really on your plate to solve. But the conclusion I'm coming to is that I still feel that as a village and probably as a state, there's a gap in, in our duty to protect the populace from the potential of gas leaks. And what I think I'd like to do is have conversations with other municipalities, perhaps at a DCCVA meeting and see how other people are looking at this issue and see whether others see it as a concern. You know, maybe I'm overreacting to a couple of anecdotal incidents where a contractor maybe got a little bit sloppy on the job. Um, or maybe there becomes kind of a groundswell of support for changing the regulation or changing the expectations or adding some kind of step, whether it's the fire department doing it or somebody else doing it. It kind of makes me want to go buy a gas meter and have it at home. But, um, you know, I, I feel personally that there's a gap between what we're doing and what we ought to be doing, uh, in terms of making sure that these new construction sites are perfectly safe for the residents. I don't think we're doing anything wrong. I don't think we're doing anything that anybody else isn't doing the same way in Dane County. So I don't mean that to sound accusatory, um, but I do think we could do better and I'd like to see if there's a way to figure that out. So I'll kind of take that on myself to chat with some of the other municipalities and see what they think about this.
Okay, Lynn?
Yeah, I agree, Tim, in the sense that this is an issue, this is a lot like law enforcement, police, public safety, right? It's not a problem until it's a problem. And I certainly don't want to be on a side where we took this lightly and then something bad happens, right? Like I think it's our due diligence. However, I do feel like I don't have enough data to really understand what I'm looking at. And I think that's complicated by the fact that it's kind of coming from all sorts of different entities, right? If it's a residential, it's not coming from you because that's not, you know, it, it's more on Alliant or, or things like that. And so I, I'm wondering if there is a way for us to get data that we can take a look at? Because I think some of my board members are alluding to this, like, if this is a problem that we really need to address, if there's a trend, if there is a discrepancy between our municipality and other municipalities, like I think we need to understand where we lie. And I'm wondering if that's even possible to gather. Can Alliant give us data on the number of calls of a residential property in our municipality? Is that a thing?
I'll take a stab, I believe so. I believe that's possible, but I don't work for Alliant.
Well, that's good. Tim or Martin, are we allowed to, to do, to ask them for that? Okay.
I'll actually give you, I'll, I'll take the lead on that and I will contact my rep at Alliant and I will see what he tells me.
That would be fantastic. Thank you, Chief.
And I will report back to Tim and Phil.
Okay.
Thank you. Amanda, you're next.
Okay, so bear with me, this might be a very silly question, but I know nothing about new construction in general, right? And when we inspect buildings, are there multiple inspections? Like one time where they come where they can see what's been installed in the walls before the drywall goes up? Or do they just come after the fact and use like special equipment that sees through the walls to see? Or like, I don't understand how this works. So like maybe Lauren or whoever can, somebody could maybe fill me in on how our building inspectors work, how like, or, or at least, I don't care.
Yeah, my understanding, and you guys feel free to jump into, is that there are specific points along the construction of a house that are checkpoints and there are requirements to, to have an inspection done of whether it's framing or electrical work before things are closed up so they can make sure that while things are still visible, they're installed correctly. When all those have, I would imagine again, I was like, you said the gas lines is a later step. I believe as far as the order of things, I'm not sure what happens first, but obviously like framing would happen at an earlier date than some of the utilities going in. But Lauren and Martin, I'm not sure if you're aware of any other, I'm sure there's a list of kind of the, the order of those inspections.
At least in a, a new home, there's typically like four or five inspections. There's the footings and foundation inspection. So once that gets in, then there's the, uh, rough-in. So that's when, um, you can look at, um, uh, the trades. So plumbing, electrical, HVAC and framing before drywall goes up. Uh, and then there's maybe an insulation inspection in there as well. And then, um, I think at that point, then it's usually final inspection. So they're looking at final connections and everything. So typically, I think three, four or five inspections for at least a single-family home. Not as confident on commercial.
And I guess a kind of a follow-up then, sort of related, but, um, so the plastic, uh, piping that you are talking about that is apparently allowed for gas lines? If we said, we don't want plastic, we can't do that because it's more strict than what the state requires, the building code?
Yeah, generally, and, and Chief weigh in here, I'm a little bit out of my element, but generally for building codes, it's uniform throughout the state. And so municipalities can't impose anything more or less restrictive. And so we just have to abide by the minimum, uh, standards in those codes.
Do, do they typically put that kind of, of gas line in places where people might want to hang a picture or put a nail in the wall for some reason?
You know, and it just don't get hung up on the plastic, that's just kind of an example.
Sure.
But I mean, plastic in general, if properly done and bonded and grounded, it works very well. So those things that inspections, inspectors, electrical inspectors look for with gas lines, because it needs to be bonded, it needs to be grounded, a hard surface ground. You know, I will just say over my lifetime, I probably had five or six different calls. We've had lightning strikes in the summertime, that feed back into a house and this plastic pipe will be, have a whole bunch of little pinholes in it where it found grounds. And guess what? It ignited. And now we got a burner underneath, when I say a burner, we got basically flames against the subfloor underneath a house, the whole width of the house, 20, 28, 30 feet wide. So yeah, that, those are the things that are all part of inspections and you have to make sure these things are done. And we've found houses that have been missing bonds and different things. So this is not just an Oregon thing. This is something that, again, inspectors in general have to just look at and figure out and make sure that these things are addressed. So, and I, I think it goes back to young inspectors. People just getting in there and, uh, doing what, uh, they believe is right and looking for things. And there might be bonds there, but it might not be bonded back to a good bond or a good ground. Different things, there's different, there's different things that need to be looked at, so. My phone will probably be lighting up tomorrow, so.
Anybody else? Okay, well, I think we learned that we can't exceed the state code. And it sounds like Tim is gonna do a little investigation about comparison to other communities, and maybe help bring that information back to us. Anybody else, any additional comments? Okay, thank you, Chief, and I'll, I'll have you stay there. And without objection, we will move to eleven, one, which is a Village Board proclamation recognizing the Oregon Area Fire EMS District and Village of Oregon Public Works Department Utility, Water Utility Division for Improved Insurance Service Office, known as ISO, Public Protection and Classification for the Village of Oregon. And I believe, Tim, you added this to the agenda?
Yes. Yeah, absolutely. Whereas ISO administers the National Public Protection Classification Program, which evaluates a community's fire suppression capabilities, including emergency communications, fire department operations, and the capacity and performance of the water system, and assigns a classification on a scale of Class One, the highest, to Class Ten, does not meet minimum criteria. And whereas the Oregon Area Fire EMS District and the Village of Oregon Public Works Department Water Utility Division work in close partnership to protect the lives and property of village residents and businesses by ensuring strong fire suppression capabilities for the community. And whereas ISO completed its periodic comprehensive review of the community's fire suppressive capabilities in May of 2025, demonstrating that the Oregon Area Fire EMS District continues to maintain high professional standards in staffing, training, equipment, station coverage, and incident planning that align with modern fire protection practices. And whereas since the prior ISO classification evaluation in 2020, the Village of Oregon Water Utility has nearly doubled its score, demonstrating substantial improvements in supply system hydrants, inspection, and flow testing practices that strengthen the capacity, distribution, and reliability of the water supply system. And whereas effective September one, 2025, ISO has increased its rating for the Village of Oregon from Class Three to Class Two for fire protection services, placing Oregon among a relatively small number of communities nationwide with such a high level of protection, and reflecting the combined strength of both fire EMS operations and the supporting water infrastructure. And whereas achieving a Class Two Public Protection Classification signifies that the community has advanced capabilities in fire prevention, emergency response, and water supply, which are associated with reduced risk of fire-related loss of life and property, and may result in more favorable consideration by insurers when setting property insurance premiums for homes and businesses. Now, therefore, we, the Village Board of the Village of Oregon, Wisconsin, do hereby recommend and commend the Oregon Area Fire EMS District and the Village of Oregon Public Works Department Water Utility Division for achieving an ISO Public Protection Classification Class Two, and further extend sincere appreciation to Fire Chief Glenn Linsmeyer, Director of Public Works Lauren Striegel, Assistant Director of Public Works Nick Hack, and Water Utility and Sewer Collections Manager Don Goury, and to all their respective staff for their exemplary professionalism, knowledge, and dedication to the Village of Oregon community. We thank you. Best suburban fire district in Dane County.
Thanks. I'll pass it along to our men and women, and again, we're just, we're here for everyone and do what we need to do.
Thanks, Chief.
Any comment, Lauren, or?
I guess the only thing I'd love to add is just the names that weren't included in the proclamation, just so they're out there. Amos Odegaard, Katie Woodson, and Kevin Stockstad all make up our amazing Water Utility and Sewer Collections team, and we are incredibly lucky to have each and every one of them.
Great.
Great.
Well, great, well, thanks a lot, Chief, and.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming by tonight.
Item ten, reports of village officers, department heads, and consultants for information only. First is the village administrator report, including a report on requested staffing, hiring, and turnover data. Questions or comments on that? Next, Amanda, please.
I was just gonna say, thanks for compiling this. I don't know that I need to see it, but I, I like what I see. You know, just some things that I noticed, there's a wide range of, like, what do you call it? Yeah, longevity versus new people, and it's a nice turnover rate, I think. I don't see anything that alarms me. I'm impressed with it, so.
Lynn.
I have a question on the first chart, average years of service. So eight point two years is the average years of service?
Yeah, and if you look at the median years, it's just five, five point three. So we have a few people that are pulling up the average, whereas half of our staff is, you know, below that five point three years.
In your experience in municipal government and, and employment, is that a typical, I, I, I mean, in other sectors of work, it is not a lot? And I wonder if that's something, especially five, is that something we should be thinking about?
I'd say it's, and this is purely speaking off no data at all other than just, you know, talking with other counterparts in other communities and being aware of other publications and things like that. But I'd say it's, our, our trends are probably closely mirroring a lot of trends in municipal work. I think the trend is getting younger. I mean, ten years ago, fifteen years ago, when I started, you know, working, things were prob, those averages and medians were probably much higher. I think particularly for the village, we've gotten quite a bit younger. Even in just my time, I think I was probably on a wave of that just five years ago. And I think we're gonna probably see another wave here in the next probably twelve to eighteen months. We're gonna see a few retirements happening. So, yeah, I'd say, I'd say it's probably pretty closely mirroring sort of industry-wide trends.
Okay.
But, yeah, we're definitely gotten a lot younger. I'd say we're, we're obviously definitely a lot younger in the police department. And I'd say we've gotten a lot younger in the public works department as well. And I think we'll see that trend in the senior center and finance department here in the next twelve to eighteen months.
Okay.
Tom.
I guess the, the volume of turnover and the numbers and the rates of the, and the, and the younger, more turnover with younger employees is sort of like an expected kind of scenario. But I guess it speaks to just the volumes of amount of work that actually gets placed on staff to address turnover and new staff. And I look at the chief and how much time they spend with the training of every new employee, and every time there's a turnover, and the costs that we associate with. Retention is, is obviously a key strategy. We want to have to lower our, our overall costs and of, and, and improving of the, the quality of work and the, a workplace for everyone. So I didn't get through some of the statistics in that kind of way that I would actually be able to pull some of that out. But some of the things that stood out was the high turnover in, in the police department, and especially within the full-time staff. Those numbers kind of jumped out at us. And I guess we have to be aware that that's maybe just part of being a police officer these days, that there is a high turnover rate there. But we do have public safety concerns that we, we have to be aware of all the time on that.
Any else?
Would it be okay?
Please.
First, I want to thank Martin for putting these numbers together, because that's not fun. And data is tricky, because it tells a story, but that story can change, just like that. I know Public Works is kind of in the same predicament. I'll only speak for the police department, but, you know, the data that's here, and I heard Martin focus on the median. So the data's there, however, I have fourteen sworn that are under that average. So that data gets tricky. And in the next year to two years, I'm gonna lose my most, two most senior individuals so that even that median is gonna significantly drop. Tom, I agree with you. I think some of this is just inevitable, but, you know, I'm not gonna settle for that. We are gonna retain, we got amazing people, we're gonna retain them. That's, I guess, that's just the comment I wanted to make, is this data gets tricky. I'm seeing that a lot, too, with some of the companies that come in and evaluate a department, much like, you know, the senior center talking about their, the bids that were put in for theirs, and talking with some chiefs about what that would look like for a police department. The data gets interpreted a certain way, and there's just more story there. But I'm happy to answer any questions about the police department, but just wanted to add that.
Questions for the chief? Okay, additional comments on this item? Rick.
Well, I can say that I was a career public employee. And I can tell you that over the time that I worked as a public employee, when I first started thirty-plus years ago, it was considered something to be very proud of, of being able to work in the public and being able to give back to the community that you serve. I can say that over the last decade plus, there has been a lot of pushback on that and that there, I wouldn't say that the public employees or staff have been under attack, but certainly the, the loss of some of the wages and benefits over time and the ability to be represented certainly has lowered the bar for what people feel that public employment is all about. And it's unfortunate, because what I see and what I have seen in public employment is that willingness to come with the, the, the understanding that you may not even make as much money as you might have in the private sector, but that you're willing to do that because you want to give back to your community. So it's, I guess, incumbent upon me and others to keep educating people as to the fact that they're, the people that work for this community and for many others are doing a very stand-up job and deserve everything that they, that they earn and more. And we're gonna have to work on retention over time in order to make sure that we can overcome these, maybe misunderstood views of what it is to be a public employee.
Well said. Anybody else? Okay, moving on. Item eleven, announcements and miscellaneous business. Announcements, comments, communications, upcoming meetings and events, and miscellaneous business. Anything from the department heads or staff? Yeah.
I don't know if anybody saw our Facebook page today, but today is National Thank Us Snowpaw Driver Day, Appreciation Day. So I think, very, yes, very timely. So I think they deserve a shout-out, and shout-out to Lauren and Nick for addressing some of the many complaints today, so. Just wanted to give a shout-out to them. Oh, the Employee Appreciation Luncheon?
Yeah.
Okay, I can mention that. The Employee Appreciation Luncheon is on December sixteenth, right, folks? Please tell me if I'm wrong. So, and it starts at eleven thirty. Another good time to appreciate all of our employees we have.
Anybody else? Lynn.
The Sustainability Committee meeting for December has been canceled. So we will reconvene in January. I'm sure that's on the calendar somewhere, but the calendar isn't in this packet, so I just.
Good catch. I must have, I must have forgot it.
We just took a bet if somebody would say something about it.
I'm sorry. But it is on the website, it's always on the website, so, but we'll get it in the packet.
Yeah, we'll insert it in the packet later, yep.
It's, yeah, the holiday threw me off last week, apparently.
Anybody else? Okay, item eight, future agenda items. This item gives board members the opportunity to place a topic on a future agenda for discussions and/or potential action. Rick?
Yeah, I'd like to have a future agenda item be a discussion about our current RFP versus sole source process in general, and how we go about deciding when we issue a recommendation to go with a current or a sole source rather than going through either a competitive bidding or some sort of RFP process. We've had several things during the time that I've been on the board that have come up, recommended by the staff, that are, in many cases, a sole source or proposals from someone in our community. And I want to make sure that both we have the public discussion a little bit more about how we go through that process so that it's clear for people when they want to be able to participate in that process.
Okay. Without objection, we'll, we'll add that. Okay, and item twelve, without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.